Great. So, let's get started then. What do you say? Welcome to everybody to our special board meeting here on Wednesday, January 20th. A very historic day. So, thanks to everyone for being here. Call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please. Do you want to do that, Amy, or do you want me to do that?
I can do it if you'd like me to. Sure. Trustee Whitaker. Trustee Kuziak.
Here.
Trustee Adams.
Here.
Vice President Theodore.
Here.
President Howard.
Here. That's great. We're all here. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes. No changes.
Thank you. This is an action item.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Thank you.
All seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment or question? Hearing none. Have to call each of you for a vote here under the new law. So, trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Trustee Kuziak?
Yes.
Vice President Theodore?
Yes.
And I will, yes, so it's five to zero. So, public comments. The Board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the Board agenda and within the Board's jurisdiction. The Board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the Board must raise their hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button. And to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With Board consensus, the President may increase or decrease the time allotted. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. Here we are to talk about the budget and, you know, I have to bring up the quote that's attributed to now President Biden, who said, "Don't tell me your values. Show me your budget and I'll know your values." So, we look forward to a discussion tonight about our values.
Yes, thank you so much. And we'll get started in a minute, but I'm so glad you actually said exactly the words that were on our minds when we put this presentation together because I think a lot of times we look at budgets and just look at them as numbers, but they really show where our priorities are and our budget is based on, and I know Ms. Chan is going to go over that. Our goals, our strategic plan, and what we really value is very important things to support our students and staff and our community. So, with that. Ms. Chan?
Thank you, Mr. Mahdi. We can go to the next few slides. I know that some of these slides, a few of them you've seen before. We went through these about a couple of months ago, I believe in November, we've shared with you the budget update. And so, next slide.
Ms. Chan, we want, so if the Board has any questions as we're going through, you can go ahead and ask instead of waiting till the end. And if your question is, the answer is coming up later, Ms. Chan will say, we'll get to it later.
Can I say one more thing? And that is, remember the last time I have to toggle back and forth because I can't see you all? So, if you want to ask a question, just as courteously as you can, interrupt Suzie on your own volition, and I think that'll work fine. So, thanks for helping me out on that one. Then I don't have to spend all day toggling back and forth and missing your question. Dot.
Gary, you might be able to adjust your screen. If you look right in between the slides and the images of us, there's two little bars. You can slide those back and forth and make the presentation smaller and make the thumbnails of our videos bigger. And, and you can put, if there's this many of us, I can see everyone now when I do that.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. So, so that's, and I would suggest that instead of, yeah, that way you can see everyone with their hand up.
Thank you, Dot.
Thank you.
It's, it's like magic.
It is. I appreciate having you around.
Next slide. And we have our strategic plan here and the LCAP goals. Next slide. I'm going to start us off. The next slide. Sorry, Amy. There you go. So, the basics of school district budget. Again, this is another slide that you've seen before. Just a reminder, you know, the budget is a financial plan for meeting the Board's goals and objectives. We, it represents estimates of income and, you know, or revenue and the maximum expenditures authorized by the Board, as well as the represents policies and priorities related to the implementation of the LCAP, which is the Local Control Accountability Plan. And, you know, fitting for this evening is projections. We are going to look at the 2021-22 Governor's Proposed Budget. So, we are at this point relying on projections for next year. And the amount of funding is not certain. And so, I'm going to kind of go over that a couple of times. And, you know, we don't really know until the Governor approves the state budget in June, which is kind of really towards the end of June. So, budget amounts or revenues will change and will need to be revised throughout. And that's what you'll see from now until, until you approve the budget and then when the state, when the Governor approves the state budget. Next slide. So, I think it's important to, to just remember where we are at this point. What is our financial, the current financial status of Castor Valley Unit 5? So, I'm going to go just review with you on the next slide. The multi-year projection, but before that, I wanted to just list for you the mitigation and cost reduction that we've implemented since 1819. Again, I didn't want to go back further, but really just looking at 1819 all the way to 2021. These are, you know, what we've implemented in order to ensure a positive certification. And what I mean by that is a 3% reserve in our multi-year projection. So, not just in the current year, but also the two subsequent fiscal years because that's what's required in order for us to have a positive certification, but positive budget certification. So, just again, a reminder of, you know, the cost reduction from 1819 all the way to 2021. I have like a few listed there for 2021, and that was because we were responding to a 10% reduction at that time. Remember, we, we, we heard because of the pandemic that the economy was not doing well, and so there was a possibility of a 10% reduction, which obviously did not materialize, and we, we were happy about that. But we ended up with a zero COLA. So, and the next slide is our multi-year projection. And this is as a first interim report. So, the first interim report that you approved December 15th included-
Ms. Chan, Mr. Kuziak has a question.
Sorry, it was just to the last slide. I just wanted to have a quick conversation about when we're talking about reducing, reducing professional development and school site budgets. I would just wonder, like, how do we, do we get feedback on that impact, right? I, I think about our teachers being able to work in our district and be supported in our district. Does that have an impact on our retention? Do we get feedback from our school sites about you've cut too much? And, you know, maybe folks are inappropriately picking up those costs. I'm just, I'm just wondering how, how that plays out, if you could kind of speak to that.
That's a really good question. And what we've done is all the professional development that's needed, we have provided. But there were things that we're doing, we were doing in addition. We're also just being very careful. We used to have to bring people in. Now we have a lot of experts in-house. And then we negotiated a lot, too.
That's great. It's great to hear that there's still an attention to the importance of that professional development, the development, trying to more efficient way of providing it.
Yeah. And absolutely. And I think we've, we have needed a lot of professional development with distance learning. So, it's been really great to do what I would, I really want to give credit to Dr. Reiman and his team for planning professional development in a way that's very effective and most more cost-effective.
Okay, we're going to, if there are no questions, we, I'm going to cover again, this, this is the multi-year projection that was approved in December. It was due to the county on December 15th, and we had the meeting on the 14th. So, just, just to show you, or again, or remind you of our current year budget 2021 and as well as the two subsequent years. So, looking at current year 2021, we have our reserve at 7.55% or $8.5 million. So, in 2122, if you recall, as part of the Governor's Propo, or at least the state budget, there's no COLA in any of these years into 2021 and the subsequent years, 2122 and 2223. So, what we're looking at in 2122, since we're really talking about 2122, our, you know, our, our, the budget that we're preparing for next year. Looking at 2122 column, if you notice the highlighted section there of $1.4 million, that is actually what we call deficit spending. Our revenue are actually, our expenditures are more than the revenue that we, we receive. So, that deficit spending is really a, an impact to our fund balance. So, if you look at all the way at the bottom of that 2122, we started with a $8.5 million in, or at least our ending reserve in 2021, which is the current year. What we're looking at in 2122 is a $7 million because of that $1.4 million impact. So, I just kind of wanted to share with you again what that, what, where we were as a first interim. And then in the third year, and the reason why I mentioned earlier, so we were able to certify ourselves, our budget positive, a positive certification is because in 2223, which is the third year, we were at 3.54% or $3.7 million.
Suzie, I'm, I'm interested how we think about how we estimate revenues for two years out, right? Are there formulas? Obviously, there's costs. We, we can look at the steps of our, our staff, right? But when we look at available revenues, how, how do we calculate that? How do we know two years in the future what that might be?
Of course. Thank you for, for, for asking that question. Yes. So, we know the base grant for our local control funding formula, right? So, we have our current year and how much base grant for each, for each grade level. And so, what we also, we, we know that for, for our current year is our enrollment and the revenue and the ADA. So, even though we're not funded, you know, in the enrollment, we're really funded out of the, you know, average daily attendance, we're held harmless this year. So, the ADA that we're using is actually because our ADA last year was higher. And so, we're able to use that this year and next year because of that. The Governor was able to hold us harmless in ADA. In the 2220 year, 2223 year, if you notice the LCFF, it goes down by $1.2 million. Because we, because of the enrollment decline in the current year, it's going to impact us in 2223. And that's the reason why there's a decline there. So, so that's how we really look at our, our revenue. And so, that's just LCFF. And of course, we have the federal, we have the other state and local. And so, we're just looking at that as a same. So, there's no COLA. We're going to get the same funding in terms of, you know, Title I, our federal funds, which is Title I, Title II, Title III, and, and the other state revenues that we receive. And then in terms of expenditures, salaries and benefits, so we, we, based on the enrollment that we have, it's also contractual obligations, right? Salaries and benefits, as well as, you know, materials and, and supplies and other operating expenditures that we have on an ongoing basis. Included in the services and operating expenditures are your utilities, right? Your, your costs to run a business, utilities, debt service, and, and, and other supplies that we need to, to, you know, to send to, to, to staff, like, you know, envelopes and papers and all of that stuff. Any, okay. So, and the next slide. So, kind of just went over this a little bit earlier with the, when I went through a couple of the slides. So, this is just a key assumptions. Again, these are, you know, what, when we develop our multi-year projection, we have the key assumptions, which is trustee Kuziak asked earlier, you know, what do we base, how do we base our, our revenue? It's, you know, it's based on the ADA and the unduplicated count. We have in that, again, just a reminder, a zero COLA in all three years. And then we also remove one-time funds because since we're looking at two out years, one-time funds in the, on the expenditure side, we account for a step in column as well as, you know, any changes to the contribution for costers and callpers, which is the, the, which is the retirement contribution for our, for our employees. And the next slide. So, we submitted our first interim report to, to the county. And so, we did receive back a letter from, from the county, from, from the, the County Superintendent of Schools, Karen Monroe, regarding, you know, this is the first interim report, and she highlights the multi-year projections and deficit spending. So, just wanted to just, this is really because they're looking at a change from 45-day revise to the first interim report. And so, she noted that in 2122, there's an increase of almost $200,000 in deficit spending. And that's because that we had a slight decrease in unduplicated count. And then in 2223, as I mentioned earlier, if there's an increase in deficit spending of $1.2 million, and that's because of that decline in enrollment. So, we had to reduce our revenue in 2223. Okay. Okay, and the next slide. Yeah.
Can't hear you, Dolly.
Right. Yeah. I was wondering, since most of the state of California has declining enrollment, and maybe you can't answer this, you know, because it's a state question. But does this mean that the whole state is going to get less money? That all of education will get less money? Or are they just going to, at some point, reshuffle this around and, you know, decide how they're going to budget us? Yes. So, this is a, it's a statewide issue, right? So, I know that there was, we reported that there was a demographic report that was done statewide, and it due to the low birth rate. This is really a decade issue, right? So, so a lot of districts, including our district, is also experiencing enrollment decline. But for other districts, it's an ongoing issue. For us, this is, we actually increased enrollment last year compared to the prior year. This is a first for us in the current year compared to last year. So, so I, we've shared the numbers with you in the past of, you know, it's about 100, about 100, 110 students that we lost compared to, to, to prior year. So, yeah, the state is aware of this, and I know that there is a advocacy out there to, for, for, for the Governor, for the Governor to hold us harmless again, just so we don't see that big, you know, that reduction in the third year. So, that's what I'm hearing is it's that push for another year of, you know, holding us harmless on ADA.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so with the 2122 Governor's Proposed Budget, what's included? So, let's go to the next slide. So, Proposition 98, just a reminder, it, this is, you know, set the minimum funding for K-12. This is, you know, the driver, you know, the driver of the increase in Prop 98 is the unanticipated acute recovery from COVID-19 recession. So, I'm going to go over that in the next slide. So, this is looking at Proposition 98 over time. Again, when I mentioned about the minimum guarantee, take a look at where we were back, you know, in 2008, '09, all the way to 2122. So, you're seeing the last couple of bars there in the current year 2021 and looking at 2122. There's an increase there of about $3 billion. Excuse me. Next slide. So, what a difference a year makes. So, last year, if you recall, I mentioned earlier that the Governor proposed a 2.29% in, in the current year 2021. And then a few months after, we found that, you know, that pandemic, schools closed, and that 2.29% turned into a 10% reduction. And then, and then, of course, in June, the, the Governor gave us zero COLA and then imposed deferrals. So, it's January, so we're looking at, you know, some revenues that came in. So, revenues came in more than projections. So, this is really a good news for us, but we, I just want to caution all of us that this is just a proposal for now, right? So, we are not going to know what we're going to get until the Governor actually signs the budget. So, here's the proposal. In 2021, as I mentioned, is a 2.31% statutory COLA, but it's not funded. In 2122, a 1.5, what he's proposing is that he's going to give us a 1.5% plus the 2.31% that we are, we did not get this year. So, it's compounded. So, we applied a 2.31% plus the 1.5. Really, the total is 3.84%, and that is what he's proposing to give us next year. So, it's in our, it's in the LCFF, and so that means that money, 3.84% is ongoing. So, so the next slide, I'm going to show you exactly, oh, actually, I'm getting ahead of myself. So, that's one. So, LCFF is 3.84%, so just keep that in mind. I'll, I'll, I have a slide that shows you exactly what the impact is. Deferrals is another, what's included in the, the proposed budget. He's eliminating most of the deferrals, which is a good news for us. Because if you recall, we also presented the cash flow and other options, borrowing options to you sometime in October. So, he is keeping the deferrals in the current year. So, this is really eliminating next year. So, in the current year, we are, he's deferring some of our apportionment, starting next month, February, all the way through June. That's going to be in place. And that's for us, it's not going to be a problem because if you recall, we said that we can borrow from ourselves, which is other funds. We can look at other funds, and we don't need to go out and borrow money that will cost us, you know, interest or, and, 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 and cost of borrowing, basically. So, we can borrow from ourselves, and there's a resolution that we will bring to your attention in, in, in March for a May, you know, so we can transfer money within, within the general, the general fund and other funds.
Suzie, it sounds like, from what I've heard from the, our district's finances, that's a luxury, a luxury that we have as a district because of how we have managed our funds. So, I think we, we thank you and your team for those efforts.
Thank you. Thank you for, for saying that, yes, because I know that other districts, as soon as they found out about this, they're already, they, they've taken advantage of the state, state, you know, tran, basically, that, you know, that, that, in, or the county, they, they looked to the county to borrow. But for us in the current year, we're in a good position. We can borrow from other funds. So, again, you know, in the, and so he's eliminating really most of the deferrals for next year, starting, you know, from February 2022, all the way through May 2022. What's left is really the June apportionment. June apportionment for June 2022, we won't get until July 2022, which is really, you know, a month for us, which is, which should not be a problem. So, we really appreciate the Governor for, for buying down deferrals. It would have cost us, if, let's just, you know, if we go, if we go through this another year, if you recall from that presenting, presentation, is that if we go out and borrow money, it probably be, cost us between $250,000 to $300,000, just to borrow about $12 million. Next slide. So, what's included also in the proposal is just, these are, there's a lot that's in the proposal, but I wanted to just to hi, just list for you what's in K-12. So, what we could possibly get? So, one, these are one-time investments, and they are for restricted purposes, right? So, they have strings attached. So, they're not, they don't come to us unrestricted. They come to us with all of these things, you know, they, it's for specific purposes. So, the $250 million, you're familiar with this. We've received it before. It's a $250 million for educator effectiveness block grant. This is professional, we talked, you mentioned professional development earlier. This is for professional development for our teachers, administrators, and other staff in high-need areas. A $50 million for statewide resources targeted for professional development, again, on social, emotional learning and trauma-informed practices. And then the two here are subject matter, so $8.3 million for California Early Math Initiative, as well as a $5 million for instructional materials for districts offering ethnics studies courses. And the last bullet here, it's a big one, is a $4.6 billion that the Governor is setting aside for extended learning time and academic intervention grants. So, while there's no concrete proposal on this one, and it would need, you know, would require early action from the legislative, you know, office, we, we are waiting, really, waiting for, to hear more about this because it's compared to the other, you know, the, the four items there. This is in billions. It's a $4.6 billion. So, we can't wait to, to hear more and, and see what we can do about, you know, come up with a plan for the extended learning time.
I have another question.
Suzie, for this potential $4.6 billion grant, I know that, obviously, we don't have enough information yet, but I know, is it per pupil, or do we actually have to apply and fight for the funds with other districts?
Yeah. So, what I'm hearing, early information that we received, is that we actually will get this money. We don't need to apply for it. It can be used for summer school. It can be used for, to extend time, so we can have our students in-person learning.
And this is really where they're, they're hoping that school districts do things that maybe we weren't able to do before, like summer school, we've always done, but expanding it to more students. Also, during the year, perhaps the possibility of extending the day. You know, like, instead of going home at 3:00, for example, can you stay later? And, you know, things like that. Just, I think this is a, a really good opportunity for us to be innovative.
Okay, and the next slide. Okay.
Do we have a sense, do we have a sense if that's a long-term commitment, that, that last bullet point?
One time.
One time.
It would just be one time. Because I know when we, we talked about the impacts of COVID, we're, we're talking about sort of long-term impacts on, on learning. So, got it?
Yeah. But it's one time, but I have to say, it doesn't mean that we have to use it one time.
Yeah.
So, we can be very, just very careful, like we've done with other block grants, and spread it around like for two, three years, so that you have enough. We've done that before.
Okay, so we've talked about the- Okay, so we've talked about the proposal. What does it mean, you know, for the LCFF? So for us, right? So we're curious as to that 3.84%, what does that mean for us? How, how will our budget look? What will, will it increase? You know, how, how will it impact our deficit spending as well? So if you, we go to the next slide, this is our multi-year projection. This is as of 2021 governor's proposed budget. So in the previous slide, I showed you the, as a first interim report, the multi-year projection. So I highlighted both sections there in 2122. If you recall, there was a $1.4 million deficit in 2122, which is really what we said called deficit spending. We're looking at a positive here, that adds to our reserve, a $2.2 million in 2122. And that's because your, our LCFF, our local control funding formula increased by, you know, almost to $3.2 million with that 3.84%. So if you look at 82.3 million dollars in the current year, it goes up to $85.5 million next year. With that, again, it's a 3.84% proposed COLA, funded, proposed funded COLA. So we're hoping that that will materialize. And that is about the $3.2 million ongoing money that we will get. So looking at all the way at the bottom of that 2122, you're seeing a 10.32% reserve. Or 10.7 million dollars. And then in 2223, again, we've already accounted for the enrollment decline. So revenues went down a bit, but we are still looking at a 10.47% reserve or a $10.9 million.
I want to say just a couple of things. I know that almost every year we have said we're deficit spending and that's what the county is asking us not to do as we move forward. So this is our opportunity.
You know, I have to say though, that the, it looks really good for a couple of years, but you know, one year we make a lot of progress. And in the third year out there, we're heading back toward the same problems. And you know, you have to wonder what the fourth year out would look like. It's a long way in the future, but after wonder if the only reason we're not in deficit spending in the second year is because of a bolus of funds that were infused. But our habits, our spending habits, we're really going to have to look at those very carefully to live within our means.
Yeah.
This has been a curse for a long time.
Yeah, and this will, this will be our opportunity to, to do that. I also want to say that's why the state also has this limit on what percent of reserve you can have. Then I'm sure Suzie can explain that also, but 10%. Because if, if what happened to us before keeps happening in the future, that's where you have to keep cutting and cutting programs versus, like you said, trustee Howard staying within our means.
You know, I don't know how many were on the capital advisors talk today, were.
We were all.
Was everybody on? I couldn't tell who was on. They explained this a bit and they said, you know, Abe Hyella, I think, told us a way we could go way over 10% by just committing the reserve.
Yeah.
So it may not be as big a problem as we had used to, we used to think it was.
May I just ask, I, I know the 3%, you know, it's, that comes from the state of California. Are there best practices among school districts throughout the state about what's a healthy reserve to have? Because of course, if you get to a certain amount, you're thinking, why, why do you have such a big reserve? Or I mean, what, what, what is the smart way of, of managing that? And I'm assuming 3% is the bare minimum and it's reflected in the communication from the Alameda County Office of Education, right? So if you have any thoughts on that, I'd be curious to know.
Yeah, so the governmental financial association, GFA, their recommendation is 17%. So I know that we have about 17%. We have our board policy that it's, you know, 17% up to 17%. And so a lot of this, you know, that we have, we do have a handful of districts in Alameda County that are at that level. And so we, I want to say years ago, prior to the, you know, a great recession, Castor Valley was in a really good position. So in terms of reserve, so when the great recession happened, surrounding districts were cutting and, but not Castor Valley. So, so reserves really help us during the time when we really need it. But you know, especially, we don't know what's going to happen in the next two years. So we're relying on one-time revenues that came in unexpectedly, which is great for us in 2122, but we don't know in 2223 and 2324. Governor is telling, you know, is, is not optimistic about the next few years.
Yeah, and 3% is about two weeks worth of our expenditures and, and bills.
So you know, this is why it's so important to get out of deficit spending is because there, you know, years ago, the district built up a healthy reserve by banking all the one-time money. Since, since 2008, we haven't had that many opportunities to get one-time money. And since we were in deficit spending, we needed to spend it anyway. So where we have been for the last few years, which is around 3 or 4%, as, as Parvien said, is really no reserve at all, almost. So we really need to get that up to be able to protect the district, to protect the employees and all the staff for sure, because we want to be able to meet our obligations.
Okay, and then we'll go, move on to the next slide. So what are the next steps, next slide? We have our ZBB. So three of you are very familiar with the ZBB process. This is, you know, based on board's direction, goals and strategic plan that we covered earlier. We looked at, you know, our priorities and we reexamine positions and allocation formulas, right? So, and then allotment that we, we get, give to our, you know, school sites and departments in terms of discretionary for their use, you know, in terms of supplies, instruction materials, as well as all the necessities to run the district and you have your operating costs. Next slide.
I'm just curious culturally, how the implementation of ZBB has been? Do you see, do you see, you know, like school sites, are they spending basically what they've been allocated? Or are you doing a lot of fund sweeps at the end of the, of the fiscal year? I mean, has it changed behavior in some ways?
Yeah, so not a whole lot of sweep at the end of the year. So our, our principals, our sites are very careful, right? So when we go through this process, it's a lengthy process. They do meet with, with business services on a regular basis, prior, during and after. And so a lot of conversations do happen. We, we, we have, we support our sites, not just business services. I know that Ed Services and, you know, Dr. Ryman's team as part of this process as well, in terms of looking at all of the, you know, funding or expenditures, HR as well in terms of, you know, of positions. And, and so this is not just a business services, you know, get kind of process. It's, it's, it's from, from HR, business services, as services as well to superintendent's office. Kind of going back to your question earlier about, do we sweep at the end of the year? Not so much because, you know, they really look at their, their spending and prioritizes, right? So there will be some, obviously, you know, when we give, you give $100, they, they, they're, they are very careful on how to spend the $100. And so there might be a little bit left, but overall, there's really not much at the end of the year from there. Unless they have, they do have, you know, plans long-term, like over a couple of years, and we do have those conversations with them.
Yeah, ZBB has really helped kind of trim that down because we used to have a lot more, you know, that we had to sweep. So now they're being very careful, only asking for what they really need. We've told them, cut down by this percentage and this percentage every single time.
So I'll add to that, that when we first started this process a few years ago, the first year was extremely painful, in particular for the admin staff, the principals and APs, and a lot of people who really had to generate these numbers. And they went through it really with a fine-tooth comb and we found out a lot about where we were spending money that we really didn't have a good grip on before. So the process has served us well here. And certainly last year, I remember very well, the schools did quite a good job of putting in their numbers. The district staff did an extraordinary job and really cut their spending, actually fairly dramatically, maybe 10% or more. I mean, it was really amazing. So I think, you know, they've done good on it and I think everybody is, is pretty conscious of this. I think what's, what we really have to think about is what is the guidance we want to give to the ZBB process? I mean, do we need to say, and what are we looking for here? What we did before went fairly well, but we were still in deficit spending. So was what we did before enough or was it in the right place or whatever? And I think that's where we need to think a little bit about, you know, what do we need to say to schools? You know, you have to cut your spending by 10% or I don't know what the number is, but we just need to get within our means, I think, to be able to make sure the district survives well in the future. The awkward thing this year, I think, is going to be as Suzie's struggling here, trying to figure out what the governor is actually going to tell us. I mean, after listening to capital advisors today, I'm still unclear about that.
I also wanted to comment about what ZBB has allowed us as trustees to do is to look at how equitable spending is across all of the schools. Like why is one school putting more money in this? And it may not be that we say no, but at least we have an understanding of why, what the goals are of the administrators at each campus and how they align with our goals. So it's been a great, yes, it was painful at the beginning for our administrators, for business services and for us having those, that five-hour meeting on a lovely Saturday afternoon with these big sheets of paper. But it's been, I feel like a really powerful tool for us to look at how our schools are, are spending money.
Yeah, and we've gotten better at now trimming that, the big papers into little papers to, to kind of managing it in a way that makes it easier to, to follow and understand. But I want you to know that there's a lot, honestly, hundreds and hundreds of hours that, that each, you know, Sherry, Suzie and Jason put in with their team and, and all of us in, in our office. And then we sit together and look at every single one of those expenditures before we bring it to you, so that we've cleaned up what, you know, we've asked all the questions that we should be asking. So when we bring it to you, we are pretty confident that they've really followed through and everything is in place. And then, you know, you give us some feedback and there's a couple of meetings for ZBB, so. We'll give you smaller papers.
So just.
As long as it's not smaller print also.
We'll make sure it's not smaller print. Just a list of what's included in the ZBB. You've, you know, again, it's just what's in our contract, collective bargaining agreements, any costs related to salaries and benefits, all the way to, you know, pro, any special programs. And usually requires extra staffing and that's going to be included in the ZBB that we'll highlight for you. Utilities, you know, cost of running business again and any federal funding and as well as corresponding expenditures. And the next slide, we are going to cover, oops, yep, thank you. So additional services that will be added, this is some, what we will again highlight for you. It's the expansion of summer school. I, I just noted there, the funding is going to come from the elementary and secondary school relief fund, which is the ESR fund, which this is what, what Ms. Amadi shared at the last meeting, that we are going to receive approximately a million dollars. And this is the stimulus 2.0 that was approved in December. Or, you know, we also, we mentioned earlier, the extended learning funding, so that we're looking forward to hearing more about. And we can use, you know, the summer, the, the expansion of summer school can be used, you know, for the funding from the extended learning funding can be used for the expansion of the summer school program, as well as compensatory services for special ed. So the next slide, I'm going to ask Dr. Ryman to cover this space, just to give you a highlight of the summer school in, for this upcoming summer.
Thank you, Ms. Chan. And as Suzie was sharing earlier, this entire process in terms of the ZBB and the budget overview impacts all of our programs. So for example, beginning at the beginning of the year and even prior to that last spring, we were aware of potential learning loss for our students. However, the budget climate was unclear. Were we dealing with a reduced budget? Were we dealing with CARES Act funds that would expire for the most part, end of December? Or are we looking at something like we're looking at now, where we have some additional funds to expand programs? And even though some of those dollars are still unfolding, we are deep into the planning for the summer program. And we'll have a more substantial presentation in February. But we, just to bring the board up to date in terms of some of the basics around our summer program, there are really three goals that we're looking at. Looking at addressing three critical areas of need. First and foremost, looking at the learning loss that's occurred due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and distance learning, where we know some students are less able to access learning. Even though this is our only option at this point, it is something that we know has had an impact on many of our students. Also re-engaging those students. So for some students, not only have grades been impacted, but potentially they haven't been engaged in school. They may even in some cases be getting some of the marks, but not engaging in the culture. So we want to figure out how we can make sure that we're providing an in-person option, if possible. We believe that's highly likely and provide opportunities to engage them and also prepare them for those routines that they're not going to need to get back in the habit of, and new routines that will undoubtedly be, need to be in place as the year begins to ensure safety. The overall structure of the program, there are going to need to be some changes. Most obviously, the class sizes will need to be reduced in order for us to meet the safety guidelines in terms of distance and all of the PPE equipment that we need to have in place in the classrooms if we're going in person. We've also expanded the elementary school. Typically in a summer, we have one school that can house all of our summer programs for elementary. Historically, we're one of the few districts that offer elementary summer school, but we have done it. We're actually going to be tripling the number of locations that we're offering summer programs. There will be three sites, Castro Valley Elementary School, Stanton Elementary School and Independent Elementary School this year. At the middle school level, for the first time, we're offering academic programs at the middle school level. Historically, we've used, this is, the summer is an opportunity to acclimate students to new campuses, to begin talking about how to opt to function on high school campus. And even though we'll continue to do that for our middle schoolers, we're adding English language arts and math programs at the middle school level. There will be both in-person as well as distance learning options for high school students. Part of the rationale for that is safety, that having students on campus for a full day may not be possible. We also know some students may be credit deficient and do find accessing learning online. However, they may have already been credit deficient and still need to go to summer school. But we'll also be offering two sessions offered concurrently, an AM and a PM session for 19 days over the summer as well. An additional piece is we're increasing our resource specialist program supports for our general ed summer school. This is not just for our extended school year program, which is for our special, for our SDC classes, but for RSP. but for our RSP program, we want to add more RSP supports as well as increased programs for English learner students. We know that a lot of what English learner students gain in terms of English language acquisition is from ambient English, as Ms. Perator often shares with us. So having students there in person, working with a person who's in front of them, being around other students and hearing English being spoken, not just in class, is very helpful for English learners and we want to provide as much support as we can to recover that learning. So all of this does come with a cost. Last year, or I'm sorry, year before last, which is the last time we offered a full in-person summer school program, we spent $374,000 on that program. We estimate that this program will be roughly triple the cost, ending up in somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2 million. We know that's expensive, but we think it's worth it. I can't remember who said this earlier, but tonight, but this is likely to be an ongoing challenge in terms of the impact of the learning loss and as much as we can front load the work, I think that that we'll be better off and our students will be better off for it as well.
I really appreciate this overview. My one question, and I think a lot of parents are probably thinking this is, does my, does my child qualify? And I, of course, we must think of this through an equity lens and see it through that. And it, I, you've spoken about that a bit here. Can you give us a sense to, to parents like in guardians, what how does my, my, my child qualify for something like this?
Absolutely. So some of it is actually on a technical level budget related in that the funds that we're using are intended to, to support students with the greatest need, our English learners, our socioeconomically disadvantaged students, our foster youth. We use a large amount of LCFF dollars, these dollars also, the new dollars that Ms. Chan was speaking about earlier. That's the intention. That said, we're looking at the students with the greatest need academically as well. At the high school level, it's fairly self-explanatory because the grades dictate who's taking part in summer programs. So students who receive Ds and Fs qualify. Counselors at the end of the year identify those students and help them to enroll. At the middle school level, we're asking and elementary level, we're asking our elementary counselors and elementary principals, as well as our middle school counselors and principals to help us identify the students who have the greatest academic need as well as the need for re-engagement. So some students may be fully engaged and were able to do some of this academic work in another manner. Even with this greatly expanded program, there are sure to be other students unfortunately with the space requirements and with the program requirements, also we're thinking about staffing that we know that most surrounding school districts are going to be looking at expanding their programs at the same time as us. In order to fill our staffing needs in a typical summer, we usually draw from surrounding districts in terms of staff. So we're going to be expanding our program just as the availability of teachers may be reduced. So we've also got to be mindful of that as well.
Yeah, so there's, there's actually a very involved process that principals go through to identify. But as Dr. Ryman said, our goal really is going to be to get as many kids as we can possibly is based on staffing and everything else that we have in place. And so but there will be a presentation with more information, right, Dr. Ryman, in February about summer school. So you'll get more information. This was just to kind of see when we talk about summer school, how about how much are we spending or might be spending on?
Nia Rashigshi and Vivian Perator are much better than I am at going into the details because they are really masterful at looking at what's going on at the site level, working with both our counselors and our teachers and looking at the groups. So for example, how are we working with our cost teams? How are we working with our social workers? Who are those groups? What is the data at each site and comparing them? They're presently working with site principals to go through that data and give a much more detailed account than we're able to do tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Ryman. We'll move on to the next slide. So this is, wanted to just kind of cover, you know, what could possibly be included in our, in our ZBB student test COVID-19 testing. We're looking at funding, a funding source for this one, which may be the elementary and secondary relief fund or and or other state funding. So the cost, just kind of just give you a ballpark number really of, you know, with the 9,200 students that we have. It's a $40 to $70 per test depending on the provider. So that's looking at $368,000. Again, this is $368,000 to $644,000 for the cost of one test for all students. So you know, staff, we have a contract with a provider and so insurance is, it's actually charged. So the provider is charging the employee's insurance company. And so for, for this one, this is again, this is a ballpark figure if 25% of our student population who, if they don't have insurance to cover the tests or to pay for the test, then it may become a district expense if the state funding is not sufficient. So that is about, you know, with the 25% population is 92, between $92,000 to $161,000 cost for just one test. So just wanted to just kind of share that with you. It's a ballpark figure again, between $40 and $70 per test, depending on the provider. Dot?
Dot.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there any plan if there are students who, who doesn't, don't have insurance to cover it to help them enroll through Covered California or through Alameda County's healthcare plan?
Yeah, so we will be working closely with, with Alameda County on those options of what we can do to assist families who may not have insurance to help them or connect them with some resources on how to apply for, like you mentioned, Covered California or other insurance options for them.
You know, that's, I mean, to, to your point, that's really not just for COVID testing, but ongoing, you know, when we talk about healthcare, universal healthcare and stuff like that. I wanted to say, if you look, if you remember the previous, a couple of slides before this, when Ms. Chan was talking about funding, ESER is about a million dollars. Our summer school cost is about a million point two. So we really do need to, hopefully, we will find out how much we're going to get from the learning loss money to cover that so that really much of the ESER may have to go for testing because, and then there is that incentive grant. If we end up being able to apply for the state incentive grant without with staying with our plan and still asking for money, which we'll always do anyway, in case they give it to us, that could also be that, that would require that we would then have testing every other week instead of once a month. So basically the money they give us will really just cover the cost. So.
No, no question on this slide. We'll move on to the next slide.
I, I, maybe I can just, I could, I can do my own research, but in terms of the cost per test, I would have thought by now, maybe the cost per test would be lower and just based on literature I've been following. And I'm just curious to know where, where, where the cost estimates are coming from and, and how, how are we not taking advantage of like lower cost testing options?
Yeah, so I would highly recommend that you don't do your own search because that's our job. But, but I have to tell you, when we first, yeah, when we
That's the concept of my, my day job.
Yeah, yeah. But when we first started, it was between $100 to $200. It's good. I mean, I, to your point, I, I don't really understand why it's $40 to $70 still. And why isn't it cheaper? But, and we don't, we actually are working with the county. They're trying to find the, the the best way, the most reliable, but also the most, you know, the, the most cost efficient. So we'll, we'll have several options I'm hearing from the county and so that we can piggyback on their contract. Because if every district goes by themselves, then we don't get the same kind of discount that we might get. Thank you.
Okay. And so this is my, the last slide. So just, you know, in terms of the process. So our ZBB that I mentioned earlier, we are starting to, or actually, we've already started our ZBB process, you know, we'd looked at enrollment. I know Dr. Beetz has, you know, been looking at the staffing allocation. And so we are now getting ready to prepare our ZBB documents that will be sent to the our principals, our department heads to really start going through, you know, same, same thing that they've done every year, right? So these documents will go to the board a couple of times, as Ms. Amadi mentioned earlier. The first one is on the 14th. Well, we will review and, and you can, we will be able to provide comments. And then we'll bring it back on the 28th with any revisions from the April 14th meeting for your final review and or approval. Then what happens is part of that ZBB process is once we have all those spreadsheets and you've approved the, you know, the expenditures and, and, and any, any new, new either programs or services, we package all of that and then we, we put together the budget. So which is like the 300 pages that you see as part, you know, which is the proposed budget in the, in the format that the, that we are required to put it in. So that is the 2021, 22 proposed budget will be the first time you'll see it in that format is June 9, is June 9 for public hearing. And then on June 23rd is the final approval. And that is my last slide. If any additional
Any questions or comments for Susie?
Asked a lot of great questions.
Well, I, I, my comment is like, I don't know how one does the mental gymnastics to put a budget together, just to think about the different revenue streams. And I, I'm grateful for that analysis that you've done, Susie. Thank you.
I also always, I also always wonder if people in the community, I mean, if you don't work with this, can, when they watch our board meeting, hopefully will they have a better idea, but it's really hard when you say, well, we don't really know our budget until June, until actually it's signed. But we still have to plan and we have to, you know, it's just not, it's not on the right cycle. If anything, you know, when you were talking about, when does this change? Are they ever going to, I would say, look at the cycle. And hopefully something at the state will change, but.
This year is just worse than most years, I have to say though. Dot?
I just want to say, I'm looking at, there's 20 attendees, which is more than we've ever had at any budget meeting. So you know, when people talk about wanting greater transparency, we have these all the time and we almost never have anyone in the room. So I think this electronic platform that we're using, that we're forced to use is actually bringing people into the room and I'm, I'm actually excited about that.
Yeah.
Well, the good thing here, yeah, that is true. I mean, I've been seven years on the board and I don't think we've ever had a guest in the room. So thanks to those people who are here. And I was wondering, Amy, are there any requests for public comment?
Yes, we have one. Chris?
Let's hear from Chris. Chris, thank you for joining us.
Chris, are you there?
Hello, Chris. I don't know if you're talking or not, Chris, but you have to unmute yourself if you are. You can't see your face and you're, it indicates that you're muted. Well, maybe Chris isn't really there. We'll keep an eye on him for a second. Is there, are there any other questions or comments from the group? I see we have two participants with raised hands now.
Yes, we just received Bill Taroli.
Let's listen to them. Let's, maybe we can take Chris off. I don't think he's here.
Well, I'm here.
Welcome, Bill.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say this is not my first budget meeting. I did attend, I think there was one in October timeframe or November. So I just wanted to say, especially given our, our last exchange about budget and Mike's comment kind of struck home when he was referring to income streams. So I actually did go back and review the recording that was posted at the last meeting and the slides. And it's not an easy thing to unravel all this. I mean, I know it's a complex topic. But one thing I can, I, I would like to share as, as someone who's now watching my second one of these is that it actually is not easy to visualize the way these numbers are flowing around. I know Amy is doing a great job of trying to explain it. But I, I'm just curious if there are any kind of resources available that people can refer to, to maybe gain a better understanding of the different streams of input and how that all comes together. I don't know if it's, you know, our training courses or some kind of documentation that might help us better understand it. Because sometimes trying to follow that information live through a meeting like this isn't necessarily the easiest way to try to process that kind of information. But I do appreciate the fact that these meetings are happening and Dot, I totally agree that the idea of losing the online access to these meetings post-COVID would be horrible. Because I think that I have certainly felt more engaged with the board and some of the other things going on than I have ever, than I've, I've heard a lot of people ever feeling. So I hope that whatever happens, that these online meetings continue. So thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Bill. You want to say something about that, Parveen?
Um, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Taroli. I really do appreciate. He always is great at attending and asking questions. I think we'll, we'll put some information, some videos, some resources. Actually, Susie and I have been kind of looking at, put online and maybe in a folder and just kind of name it that so that people can, can use it and then ask questions if they have. But there's quite a bit that we can actually share. That would be hopefully helpful.
I wanted to make a comment about testing, also the cost of testing. So you know, HIV is what I do and HIV has been around for a long time and HIV testing is very common. And a single HIV test still costs about $30 to $40. So I don't see, even, even because we're in this pandemic situation, I think the cost is the cost. There's going to be, you know, this is a capitalist society that we live in. So the companies that do those tests still make the money doing those tests and we just need to, and I know you already are doing all the work you can to join in with other districts to get a better deal, but unfortunately, they just cost a lot of money.
Yes.
In addition,
Go ahead.
In addition to the cost of the test that you were mentioning, for us, it's also, it's also the cost of staff. Right? Because we can't just say to kids, here's your test, go ahead and take it. So that cost needs to be built in all of this as well. Because we have to have staff to do it.
I'll say two things. One, at the revenue enhancement committee, we put together some graphs that were really easily consumable to understand the budget. I know, not directing to saying that those really worked well to help people understand how we were spending our money. So just putting, pointing that out. And then I was going to say that as for testing, I mean, everybody's competing for those resources right now. So the demand is so high. I know that we have a problem at my work finding them and getting the contracts and competing, so.
Yeah.
Parveen.
Yeah, last thing. You reminded me of our Revenue Enhancement Committee. I know that Mr. Kuziak and I have talked about that too. So we will, we need to look at our calendar and start that back up because that might be the the venue really that we use to explain all of this. And I'm going to email you, Mr. Taroli, to make sure that you come to that Revenue Enhancement. You're signed up now.
Great.
You're going to volunteer telling people, Parveen.
There's one one other thought that occurred to me the other day, and that is we might want to at some point think about is a long term project, but I don't I don't see any reason why we couldn't have an endowment that supports the district. If we could build that up. It takes some time, obviously, but that might provide a more stable source of income for us. Many other organizations have such a thing, and I think that would be a good thing maybe for the Revenue Enhancement Committee that Parveen just mentioned to evaluate that as a possibility and see whether there's any there there in that idea or not. Maybe you can put that on your list, Michael. I think you're on that committee and I forget who else is on it. There are two of us who are on it, but I forget the other person. Nobody seems to know. Somebody's on that committee besides Mike.
Yeah, I know Mr. Kuziak is on it. I want to say Amy probably knows, but we'll have to look that.
Gary, I think it's you.
I don't think it. I thought it was off this year. I was pretty sure.
I think you're, I think you're.
Still on? Yikes. Well, it's me then is being absent minded. Any other questions or comments?
No. So can I ask a question then? And as we talk to our, you know, to to our teams about zero based budgeting. I have to say, it's been really, I mean, they have really cut, cut, cut at the school sites and in for ZBB. Is there a direction that we have for additional cuts or with the news that we have right now? With all of the things we've put in place. Are we just going to be very careful?
Lavender.
I mean, I think at this point where we're at, I think it's maintenance and and ensuring like Dot mentioned that we're still having that equity piece across the board with our school sites. So, I mean, we we've cut so much. We're where we're at, where we're at, and let's, you know, it's maintenance at this point. And that's something that if we need to pull that lever, we can. That's that's my view.
Any other thoughts? Well, my thought on it is this is a very awkward year to do this because in an ordinary year, there's real uncertainty in what our finances are until this June after we've already spent all the money. This year is even more uncertain. So it's a really a very awkward time to undertake this. But as Parveen pointed out, we get a little extra money next year, and that's an opportunity for us to try to get out of deficit spending. So I'm not sure where this is. I mean, cut, cut, cut. But we're still spending too much. And somewhere or other, wherever it is, we got to find it. I think. Dot and then Parveen.
Um, I I appreciate the question, but I always find it a little hard to sort of off the cuff say, oh, well, yes, let's, why don't we ask all of our administrators to reduce their budgets by ten percent or five percent? Do you have some ideas of like, what would you recommend? I could say, let's everyone cut by three percent. But what does that mean? And, you know?
Yeah, I think that's a good question, Parveen. I mean, for us, it might be taking a meat cleaver to something where a scalpel would be more appropriate. You you wanted to answer her, I think.
Yeah, to be honest, I I'm kind of where trustee Whitaker is that we have done really just scrape the bottom and we have to continue to do that and look at ways that we can save and do things more efficiently. We're always looking at that. I can tell you that you will see some of that, but I don't know that at this point I would say cut anymore. But I would look at equity. I would look at maybe what, you know, the result of what we've done and just being very, very careful with our funds. And then the last thing I want to say is when Ms. Chan was showing that page with the deficit spending going away, that means we could actually get rid of our deficit spending for good. If because of the three point eight for cola and still have a reserve. So we can't. We we don't have to be deficit spending. I've never been in a place where I can say that since two thousand eight. I kind of have to. I I keep thinking, am I dreaming? But.
Dot.
I I also wanted to add, because, you know, most of our budget is in salaries and we we can't cut that. So, you know, it's a rock and hard place, and here we are.
Well, take issue with one thing there being the staff can be cut. I mean, not that I'm advocating that we go out and fire anybody. Don't get me wrong on that. But, you know, attrition happens and it may be that there are positions we don't have to fill at some point because, you know, we have added a lot of staff and it's for good cause and we want them to be there for sure. We certainly made a massive investment in the in the social workers and counselors and so forth that maybe some other districts don't have, and we want to keep those. But that but in order to keep those, we need to figure out how to make that work. Now, I'm not I'm not just singling them out. It's just an example. They're not on the chopping block. Nobody is. But I believe at some point, if we run out of money, people are going to be on the chopping block, and that's what we don't want. We only have a certain amount of time to deficit spend and then we're broke.
Yeah.
Yeah, Parveen.
So I I would say, let's, like you have said before, all of you have said, we've got to stop deficit spending. But I just want you to know, we're also cutting staff that are not needed because we lost the enrollment. Miss Dr. Beats is already looking at trimming staff and we're always looking at that. And then we're looking at maybe some, like you said, maybe there are positions that have not been filled that we don't feel. We don't need to go. And we've we've done that before and we'll continue to do that. Absolutely. But but it's not programs that we have in place. It's either programs we don't have or a position that we don't need anymore, or we can do it differently. And also just reduced enrollment. Let's use you.
I keep hoping also that the loss of enrollment is sort of a fluke of the pandemic and that once that settles out, then maybe we will come back to where we were before and we've never been in that. This is our first year of being whereas almost every other district. Well, except Dublin and Fremont perhaps, but all the rest of them are have been through that wringer already.
I think Mr. Kuziak.
Molly. Can't hear you. There you go.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, oh, you know, hopefully, we wouldn't be considering firing teachers or firing staff that it would be done if it needed to be reduced, be done by attrition. You know, people just not being rehired and then kind of reshuffling. And all the time I've been in this district there, you know, you know, as a when I was a teacher here. We never really had to do that, and that's a long time that I was in there, twenty one years. I don't remember the district ever cutting teachers. So or or cutting paraeducators, there was a time right after the two thousand eight, two thousand nine, where there was a furlough. Which was a little different that but there weren't people that were actually fired. So looking better than that, I think it seems to me. So hopefully, if we did have to reduce the number of people because there are less students, then it would be done by attrition.
Well, let me be clear here. Nobody's going to fire anybody, period. And what we really want to do is plan our budgets so we don't have to do that at all. Because we don't want to ever do it. And if we had to trim a little bit attrition, we'd lose Sherry's on here, but I think we lose thirty or forty people each year. We have some turnover. In some years, we've had to add recently sixty sixty some. So there's all there's room sometimes for that. But once again, hopefully, we won't need that at all.
Right.
We build up a staff that we want and a plan that we like. Want to keep it. Thank you, Sherry, for appearing magically.
Yeah, I I I think. I mean, you should watch Sherry for just a couple of hours one time. It's got all these charts and they look at it and he's got it right there. We look at that tiny print. Because she really looks at like every single grade, every single FTE, every single point. And that's why I said every year when we can, without impacting programs, we trim. And it's very complicated, but we do that. But that's not, that doesn't mean you lay people off if you don't need to or any of that. It just means to just look at it and say, oh, we don't, we need this FTE over here instead of over here or not at all. But Sherry can.
Michael.
Um, as we've been talking through this, I I just hope we we take an opportunity as we face a really challenging time, right? Economically with the pandemic. I I appreciate what our conversation about public engagement tonight. I I think it's important that we speak with conviction about why we why we have teachers, why we have staff members and use this as an opportunity to really tell that story to the public. There is so much, I would say, a lack of investment sometimes in understanding how institutions work, like school districts and their budgets. And the things I have heard from fellow residents in this community about what they think they know about how a school district is run is really frustrating. So I hope that we can use this opportunity as a reminder to so what those values are and what why we have administrative staff. What does administrative staff do for us? What do what does it mean to have social workers? So I I think that we have a really great opportunity from this moment in time to to transform the community conversation around our budget.
Well, that's one has in the past has been one of the charges to the Revenue Enhancement Committee. There was a subcommittee on that. In fact, I think led by Lavender, if I remember correctly. That no, maybe not, huh? At any rate, where the charge was to educate the community and also our elected officials like our legislators in Sacramento about what we need and what education needs to be properly funded in California as opposed to New York, where they get twice as much per student as we do. That's a good point, and I guess you and I'll be able to work on that committee to move that forward again. Anything else? Anybody?
No, we'll we'll send you some, we'll ask for some dates from the two of you so we can actually get started with the Revenue Enhancement Committee.
And remember, Bill, too.
Bill's already on.
Okay.
Well, okay, so thanks for everybody here.
Thank you.
In particular to Susie for a great presentation and a lot of work behind the scenes. Thanks to all the community members who are on, including Bill and Chris, who we missed. Sorry about that, Chris. At any rate, we hope to see you all back at our meetings. We have another one, I think, next week. Is that correct?
Yes.
Next week from tomorrow. So I will see you all again then. So thank you very much and good night.